Good morning. Today's Tuesday, March the eighth, and the time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Davidson and I are present. Also with us are, identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Joshua Brown, Operations.
Jennifer Hawley, Grant Specialist.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office.
Sharon Roberts, Trash Billing.
Kathleen Graves, Clerk's Office.
Mike Quirk, Operations.
Evan Ametin, Procurement.
Kevin Ditner, Grand Minister.
Bob Bennet, Republic Services.
Bob Duncan, Dedicated Procurement.
Lorna Jorgensen, Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
N I T U A, Tim Sturgis, Clerk's Office.
Don Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Okay.
Trent Schubel, Clerk's Office.
Bob McQuaid, Assessor.
Beth Mon, Treasurer.
And we have with us on the bridge this morning, we have Brett Harding, Stephanie Johnson, Evan Anderson, and Scott Coburg.
Evan Ametin.
Evan. Oh, okay, Evan, Evan Ametin. Well, you're right there. And you're also on the bridge. How'd you do that? Okay. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Okay, good. We have four resolutions this morning. I will open the public hearing on Resolution two seven three five, ARPA Resolution number nine, the approval of allowable expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Fund Budget. Do we have any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
This is an ARPA resolution, or $240,000, to hire a pathologist to address the backlog of visits for the coroner's office.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on it? Brett?
Nope.
Okay. Nope. He knows what it is. Okay.
Yep.
With that, I will close the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three five. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution number two seven three five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I will open the public hearing on Resolution two seven three six, Resolution for a Change Order to Sole Source Contract for Radio Equipment and Related Services for Avemore and Schaefer Butte radio sites for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Do we have discussion on that? Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three six. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution number two seven three six as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I will second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I will open the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three seven, Resolution for Lease Purchase of Caterpillar Equipment for the Landfield. Do we have any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution two seven three seven. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution number two seven three seven and Agreement Number one four six oh five as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I have a legal que- I have a question. We have underneath here an agreement. Are we going to do this one under, under the Agreement Section? Or are we going to do it under the Resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, I think you just made the motion.
Right, all right, good enough. Okay, we have, I will open the public hearing on Resolution two seven three eight, Resolution for Sole Source Procurement of Camera Equipment Through Integrated Security Services for FY twenty-two. Do we have any discussion on this resolution? Hearing no discussion, I will close the public hearing on Resolution two seven three eight. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number two seven three eight as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have two proclamations this morning. Proclamation on designating March as the Certified Government Financial Manager Month.
Are we going to do one each?
We'll do one each. Would you read that proclamation?
I wanted to do the women's one.
You can do that too.
Okay. That's what I get for asking. All right, the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the month of March as Certified Government Financial Manager Month. Whereas, designating March 2022 as Certified Government Financial Manager Month in the county of Ada, state of Idaho, whereas, the Idaho Centennial Chapter of the Association of Government Accountants is a professional organization, associated with and a part of the Association of Government Accountants, which is a network of fourteen thousand members in ninety chapters in the United States and around the world, with two hundred and seven active members in Idaho, representing state, federal, municipal, and private sector accountants, auditors, and financial managers. And whereas, the AGA Idaho Centennial Chapter members have responded to the AGA's mission of advancing government accountability as it has continued its broad educational efforts with an emphasis on high standards of conduct, honor, and character in its code of ethics. And whereas, the AGA Idaho Centennial Chapter members are also making significant advances in both professional ability and service to the citizens of Idaho through their mastery of increasingly technical and complex requirements. And whereas, the Certified Government Financial Manager Program of Association of Government Accountants, AGA, provides for the demonstration of professionalism and competency by requiring CGFM candidates to have appropriate educational unemployment history, to abide by AGA's code of ethics, and to pass a three-part examination requiring expertise in governmental environment, government financial management and control, and governmental accounting, financial reporting, and budgeting, and requires each CGFM holder to maintain certification by completing at least eighty hours of continuing professional education in government financial management topics or related technical subjects every two years. And whereas, the AGA Idaho Centennial Chapter demonstrates high standards of conduct, honor, and professionalism. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby recognize the Certified Government Financial Manager Program for its impact on governmental accounting and financial management in Idaho, and proclaim March 2022 in Ada County as Certified Government Financial Manager Month. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to, let's see. I move to adopt the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate March 2022 as Certified Government Financial Manager Month.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll have a little photo session after we do the other one, okay? Next up is designate March 2022 as Women's History Month. Could you read that?
All right, the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation, Women's History Month, March 2022. Whereas, the leadership, achievements, courage, and strength of all Idaho women make Ada County a stronger and more vibrant community. And whereas, many of the great leaders in county government are able to share their gifts and talents due to the trailblazers who paved the way before them. And whereas, women have led by example, inspiring both men and women to pursue leadership positions, ensuring that all communities are equally represented. And whereas, Ada County continues to thrive and prosper due to the great achievements made by women and the men who encourage and support them. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ada County Commissioners does hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt and approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate March 2022 as Women's History Month.
I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right.
All right, now, come on up, we'll take a, take a photo. We got a photographer right over there.
You're gonna go right by the flag?
Right by the flag.
I didn't wear my red shoes today.
Oh, that's Monday.
Oh, that's next Monday.
That's right, okay. I thought it would clash.
I don't have my red shoes either.
Well, you better put them on.
Yeah, I know, I know. This is a proclamation designating a month of March as Certified Government.
Have you step forward?
Okay.
You step in, Ryan step in too. Okay, I'm just gonna, very nice photo. Nice chair. Okay, one, two, three, big, happy smiles. And more happy smiles. Yay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll get this, we have to get a real take.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Do we wanna do another one with all the women here?
I don't know.
What do you want to do, Elizabeth?
Uh, probably we'll do it on, we can do it Monday downstairs.
All right, we'll do it Monday upstairs.
There'll probably be more picturesque.
No.
All right, well, good enough. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more single audits?
Actually, I just got noticed from the state on theirs, so.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we maybe have Elizabeth just talk about the event that's coming up? That this resolution will be honoring?
So, Monday, March fourteenth, we will have an event downstairs at noon in the lobby. And we will have the State Treasurer, Julie Ellsworth, Kendra, a lot of the women who were the first women office holders in Ada County. For instance, Jan Bennett is the first woman prosecutor. Let's see, Dottie Owens is the first woman coroner, and the list goes on and on. We're also inviting all Ada County legislators, so keeping it really Ada County, we could make it massive. But this was Kendra's idea, and she was really inspired by the red shoe picture that she saw at Julie Ellsworth's office. And so, we're all gonna gather down there, there's gonna be a big, massive cake. There's be some remarks from various people. And everybody's encouraged to wear red shoes. So, men, you know, everybody wear red shoes. If you don't have red shoes, you can wear red socks with sandals, because it's a really good look. So, that's at noon on Monday.
Okay.
Monday.
This, um, this is coming Monday, yeah, the fourteenth, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any red shoes.
I got some spray paint.
I might can find some red socks. Okay. Moving along, we have a procurement, opening of bid number two two zero two one, Barber Park Pathways and Bridges.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson. Before you this morning is the opening of bid two two zero two one, the Ada County Barber Park Pathways and Bridges 2022 project. And Evan has our bonfire in procurement system queued up on the screen. If you're ready for us to open, we'll open them up.
Let's open them.
All right, Evan, let's see who we have. Evan's on soon and now, and
Okay.
we should have five responses up there when the spreadsheet opens up. Okay, the order list is coming up. And Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I could go ahead and read this.
Yes, read them in the record, yes.
Okay. So, our first bidder is Brycon Incorporated. And they have a total bid amount of $553,000. Our second bidder is Compliance Solutions Contracting LLC, and they have a total bid amount of $822,320. Third contractor is Diamond Contractors LLC with a total bid amount of $694,750. Bitter number four is TDX Power Services with a bid of $773,510. And our final bidder is Idaho Sightworks LLC, and they have a total bid amount of $607,433.70. So, those are our five bidders. And we will need a little bit of time to take a look at these bids and make sure that the evaluation team goes through and takes a look and make sure that administrative requirements are all met. And we request at this table for award to the March fifteenth, 2022 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to table the award of bid twenty-two zero two one, Barber Park Pathways and Bridges to, what was it, Bob?
March fifteenth, 2022.
March fifteenth, 2022.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. We have a change order number one, Sheriff's Office Design Bill of Radio Communication Site. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Change Order Number One as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
All right, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We have Trent. You have some good reports from Trent, from the clerk's office?
I know Phil's on the bridge. If, I'll defer to him if he would like to say a few things.
Well, I didn't see Phil on the bridge. Welcome, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'll let, a couple of things. One, thank you for recognizing Certified Government Financial Manager Month. I think, you know, our meeting with Bobby last week really highlights the work that Kathleen and Tim and the team do.
Sure.
So, just appreciate you recognizing that. I'm going to be on the call with Seth and IAC here in about an hour, or a little less than an hour, about the tax proposal. I don't know if we've talked to our lobbyists yet, but it's something we should probably be watching very closely, just the implications of what it could mean to the county moving forward. So, we'll be watching that. And then, I know, I'll let Trent give an update just in terms of what's going on in elections. He's been actively engaged out there. So, I'm watching the election.
I'll be on that call as well. So, Trent, he's.
Okay.
For the election, we're still in the middle of candidate filing. We've made great strides in getting our new voter registration system through 10x aligned with all the new precincts. We hope by the end of today, if not first thing in the morning, that'll be completely finalized, and we'll be sending out on the candidate portal a list of all the registered voters in the different precincts, the new precincts, so people can start accessing those as well. I know that's a big, big thing for a lot of folks to have. So, we're on track right now. We've, we've secured, I think, up to ninety percent of the new polling places that we would need for all the new precincts. And we're getting those surveyed. There will be a couple of dual precincts, just because some of these precincts don't have, literally don't have a physical space in them that can act as a precinct. So, we're working on that, but we feel pretty good about where we're at right now.
The dual thing, that, that works out pretty good, doesn't it? It's a large enough facility, this, you should go to this precinct, go to this precinct.
It is, and that's what we have to keep an eye on for, is the size of the dual precincts that we're, we're doing, so it makes sense.
Good. Anything else?
Just, I'll echo Phil's comments. I, you know, our, our office is, is dedicated to serving the public in a way that builds trust in government. And CGFM is a key ingredient in that. And it's not ironic that it's also Women's History Month with Kathleen as our controller. She has done amazing things for the office and has represented accountants and controllers very well over her time here. So, we thank her, hopefully, every day in our hearts that she is leading that office, because it, it goes a long way to building trust in government.
Yeah, we'll thank you, and that's why we recognize her. Okay. Anything else? Phil? Trent?
Nope.
Okay, moving along. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated March fourth, 2022.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions, one conditional pay increase, one step increase. The Sheriff's Pay Plan may have a motion on personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have with us our distinguished assessor, Mr. Bob McQuaid. You have us a good report. I see you do actually have some tax cancellation.
Mr. Chairman, we do. I really had this feeling that the Treasurer's Office was getting caught up, so we thought we would send some more work there.
Send some more over, okay.
Actually, the reason we're having these, again, these, most of these are because of the change in the application date for the Homestead Exemption. We've, we will get an application for the exemption, and we might be missing a piece of information, so we have to reach out with the applicant. And it, it takes several weeks to get that information, so we've got a few coming through. But nothing like we saw a month ago. Just also wanted to mention, in the assessor's office, we're working on the reappraisal where we are at this point in time. Last fall, we did the inspection of twenty percent of the parcels by statute. We have to look at, do a physical inspection for twenty percent of the parcels. It's what we're doing at this point in time now. We're going over all the sales that we had last year and checking to make sure that the arms length sales. And then, we're going to compare those sales prices. We will trend those up to January first of 2022. We will compare that trended value to our January first, 2021 assessed value. And whatever the difference is there, we will increase for, just in general, we're looking at maybe about a thirty percent increase in, in assessed values again. Or this year, last year, we were about twenty-six percent, probably about a thirty percent this year.
That's fifty-six.
Pardon me?
That's, you can't combine the two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you're, you're correct. I was talking to a fee appraiser the other day. He feels that we're going to be in for a correction within the next couple of years or so. And he feels maybe ten percent lower where we are today. And I just, I can't imagine that. Who knows where we're headed? We have, March fifteenth is a, is a big date for us. All personal property reports have to be submitted to us by then. We're getting mail, and that takes almost a day to open the, the volume of mail that we're receiving.
You don't have a jogger?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Might be helpful.
She's gone. Yeah, we're going on a marathon right now. And then, property tax reduction, PTR applications, those are typically due the fifteenth of April, but this year, because of the way the dates fall, they're going to be due the nineteenth of April. So, that's what's going on in the assessor's office. We've got a few tax cancellations, reappraisal, personal property declarations we're working on, and private tax reduction.
Okay. It should be noted that the tax cancellations are not really cancellation of taxes. It's just an adjustment, but the code requires us to call it tax cancellation.
Mr. Chairman, you're right. Maybe we should work on a piece of legislation for that.
All right. Do I have a motion on the tax cancellation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for 2020 and nine tax cancellations for 2021, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second that motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Okay, we have also with us today our distinguished Treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson. I'll, I'll be joining you on the call this morning as well. And then, the Treasurer's also tracking legislation impacting taxpayers. One that we're tracking right now is a proposal to decrease the interest rate on delinquent taxes. So, we're following that. The proposed effective date is July one of this year, so we're closely tracking that because should it pass, we will have to communicate with that, with the taxpayer. And it also involves some programming changes from your IT department. So, we are tracking that very closely. And other than that, our update is our February month-end report. For that, I'll hand it over to Tim.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Changing the interest rate from what to what?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it is currently one percent, and it would be reduced to a half a percent. Per month.
Oh, per month.
Sorry, per month.
Okay.
Thank you, that is very.
Oh, I'm thinking, okay. So, that, that is quite a big, from twelve to six, actually. Okay. All right, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I have the month-end report for February, and I have an extra copy.
I haven't seen. I haven't seen it, actually.
It, it was a fairly quiet month. We didn't have any maturities in February. We did have one purchase, a $5 million, roughly $5 million Fannie Mae mortgage-backed security on the 14th of February. Other than that, it was pretty calm, quiet month. We were able to clear out the exceptions that we had trailing on there for the last few months. We finally got.
Those are all finished, cleared up, Tim?
Cleared up, yeah. It was, it was nice to see that this month. In terms of interest rates and so forth out there, you may be aware, next week, the Fed is meeting, and most economists think we'll see a 25 basis point increase in the federal funds rate. So, that affects, you know, our, our market values, and alternatively, though, it increases the yields on the shorter-term bonds, and gives us an opportunity there to, when we reinvest.
Okay, any questions on the financial report? All right, well, thank you. Appreciate your work you do. Appreciate it, thanks. You might, you might tell the assessor what a jogger is, and, and you might, if he wants to borrow it, you know, he might just borrow your jogger.
Can we do that offline?
Okay, it opens up letters. All the letters you were talking about.
That clears things up.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have four trash service suspension requests, and we have Charah with us. You wanted to tell us about them, right?
I moved on, yeah.
Yeah, you did. I found you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson. In front of you for consideration are four trash suspension requests. All four of these are accounts that have historically been suspended. They're just going through the formal process to renew it for another year. I know one question that we like to ask is, is there a homeowner's exemption in place? We have researched these and verified, all but one do not have a homeowner's exemption, but there are some extraordinary circumstances with that applicant, and I would recommend approving it, because we did approve it last year for this applicant, but I will leave that decision up to you.
Thank you. Is there any reason we shouldn't approve it?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the four trash suspension requests as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Charah. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We have interim event agreements at, for Expo Idaho. We have two grappling tournaments. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the two interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have five Barber Park Education and Event Center events, or agreements. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the five Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have 15 agreements on the agenda. I've read through the agreements. We'll now, is there any discussion on any of the agreements?
Mr. Chair, so question to Tom for, could you talk about the, the first one on the agenda between Ada County and Allied Waste?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, this is an agreement that the landfill views is, is beneficial to everyone in the county. This allows Republic Services to store some of their roll-off boxes onsite in our operations area, so they, they can be more efficient when serving, servicing their customers that are nearer to the landfill. We're also letting Hardened Sanitation store boxes onsite, and as a public good, this just seems like a, a really good way to be able to benefit the entire county and keep waste service more efficient for all residents.
Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion or questions on any of the agreements?
Nope, I don't think so.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 10 agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in recess. Thank you.